Roll call.
Certainly, Ms. Jordan Byron.
Present.
Ms. Ling Alice.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Muschak.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
And Mr. Scholman.
Uh, here, and I, I see Ms. Wells has just arrived.
Oh, here. There we go.
So. Okay. At the moment, we're seven. We're still expecting one other member to join us. Uh, we're going to very briefly reopen two public hearings tonight. And let's start with 2022 dash 16 SP Schoolhouse Academy, Inc., 32 Wheat Avenue, proposed kindergarten through 12th grade private school. Uh, Steve, I'm gonna ask you if you could just give background on that.
Certainly. So their applicant, applicant is working with TMP staff and the city's consultant AKRF on some traffic issues. So that's kind of just in the, in the hopper. So once those get resolved, we anticipate hopefully continuing the public hearing and potentially closing it at your August 4th meeting.
Okay, um, with that, uh, is there any, uh, anything further that we need do?
I would just, uh, you know, take a quick vote on moving the item to the August 4th meeting with everybody's agreement.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to that effect? Uh, Tammy has made motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Galen has made a second. Uh, any questions, concerns, uh, regarding that? All right, if not, uh, let's vote. I think we can vote, uh, with, uh, raising of our hands. Uh, all those in favor of moving the continuation of the hearing to August 4th? And that looks to be unanimous. Um, nonetheless, I'll ask any opposed, any abstentions, and there are none. So it's unanimous. The second item. 2022 dash, uh, 19 R slash SP slash SPR Wegmans Food Market, Inc., 47 Richards Avenue and 677, uh, and 667 and 651 Connecticut Avenue. Uh, zoning text amendment, special permit and site plan review application for Wegmans Grocery Store. Uh, again, Steve, uh, do you want to get us started with that?
Sure, and very similar to the, uh, 32 weed, the applicant is working with, uh, TMP and AKRF on some traffic issues. We, at this point, would recommend continuing the hearing to your August 17th meeting, and we'll see where we're at at that stage if it's ready for action.
Hey, uh, can I have a motion to that effect to move the meeting to August 17th? JJ has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, I heard a couple of voices, but I think Nick was first. Nick seconds. Uh, questions, comments?
Do you have, Mr. Before you vote, uh, Jay Klein on behalf of the applicant would like to speak if I'm not sure what, but.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah, uh, hey, folks, um, good evening, Jay Klein, uh, working with Wegmans. Just wanted to confirm the meeting on Wednesday, August 17th. Uh, that'll be at 6:00 PM via Zoom, same as, uh, this, this format.
That's correct.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much.
We'll see you then.
Thank you. I'm muting myself.
All right, uh, all those in, all those in favor? Right, again, a show of hands will be sufficient. Um, and again, unanimous, any opposed, any abstentions, none? Um, okay, so, uh, we'll close, um, uh, the, uh, public hearing until, uh, uh, August 17th when we'll reopen. And we'll move on to review and action on applications. The first being 2022 dash 24 SP slash CAM, uh, Milpon Holdings LLC, One Cemetery Street, construction of 77 unit mixed-use development. This is a continuation of the preliminary, uh, uh, review. Um, and who is representing the applicant? Okay, Attorney Blank?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Adam Blank, uh, Woffsy Rosen for the applicant. Um, so, uh, yeah, so we're gonna just give you a report back, some updates. Um, so you're in the loop on what's going on with the project. We're not yet ready for a public hearing. Um, it's, as you know, it's, uh, One Cemetery Street. And should be up. So you've got the, the site. The site is here, is One Cemetery. Uh, that's the property that we're talking about. Um, with the plan to construct two, one smaller building here and a larger building here. Um, I think.
Attorney Blank, could you go back to the other, uh, drawing? Uh, the reason I, uh, ask is I'm looking to where that abuts, uh, the water.
So this. So our property right in here, and this is actually where the drainage comes out as well.
Hmm.
Um, as you heard previously, there's a, an easement and there's a piping that ends here. So we connect here. This little area is, is city property. Um, and, and part of my update is that I have been in touch with the law department and we have started working on uh, coming up with the terms of a easement for that public access that we've talked, that was talked about at the prior meeting. This is that city piece that I just showed you here. And we, we've agreed that as part of a condition of approval, we would, uh, grant access to the public over our property so that they could get to the city piece.
Okay.
Is that good enough, Mr. Chairman, or you need this backup?
No, just a, a, a quick, uh, follow-up. Uh, I, I understand it's city property, but, um, does the developer intend to put any improvements on that property?
I, I, I don't believe so. Um, I think, I think we, we intend to give the city access to it and let the city design, um, what it would like. Um, I don't know, Mac can chime in if there have been any discussions from the city about, um, their plans at this point. There may not.
Um, no, that's correct. Adam, Adam stated correctly. We, we did, if you saw the landscape plans that Adam had up earlier, did present a concept, or our landscape architect presented the concept, but, um, kinda we're, we're, we're trying not to tie those improvements to, to our project. Um, but more than happy to kind of allow for that parcel to be improved and accessed by the public through our property.
Thank you.
So, um, on the, on the project, and I, I want to just, you know, some of this was discussed last time, but I'll just clarify. So there's 77 units. Um, we've got in this main building, there's about 5,000 square feet of amenity space over here on the first floor. There's about 3,000 square feet of retail on this corner. And then in the smaller building over here, it's about 3,000 square feet of retail and office on the first floor with three larger units of housing above. And then 74 units of housing on the upper stories in the main building. That's the general breakdown of the sort of development with about 99, 99 onsite parking and some proposed, um, uh, parking on the street. That would be in addition to the 99 onsite. Um, we've got, uh, can stop sharing for now. Tonight we have, um, uh, Colin Growth Year from Bruce Beinfield's office is, is on with us, and he'll give you an update in a few minutes on the architectural developments. Obviously, Matt, who just chimed in from Spinnaker is also, uh, with us. Um, and he can give you some updates or answer questions that come up, uh, for traffic. Uh, there was a, a little miscommunication and Mike Galante and, um, Greg Del Rio, who are the traffic engineers, um, uh, couldn't be here tonight. We, we learned that about an hour ago, so it's news to us. Um, but we, we do, and we apologize, but we, we will give you an update on where things stand with traffic and hopefully where we're headed um, on that front. Um, but, but they won't be here to answer questions. Um, so let me give you some, some updates. Uh, as we actually just talked about the, um, drainage that comes through the property and, and, and out over here. Um, we have had a, a wetland scientist out who's confirmed that there are some wetlands, uh, in there. Uh, actually, the Mill Pond is not an inland wetland, so it would just be that as the inland wetland. Um, and that's, so it's been flagged. I think there's three flags out there, and the report is promised, uh, this week. Um, as soon as we have that in, we will have, uh, that to the Wetlands Conservation Office. Um, and to begin their review on the inland wetland component of it, which has to be completed before you can, uh, take action on this item. So, so we're moving forward with that. Um, the, um, and, and, and I, I, we expect that, that, you know, I don't know, it's sort of up to the staff, but the, but on the wetlands front, it could be four weeks, it could be eight weeks before they act. Um, we just, we, we, we're not in control over that, but they obviously need our submission to get that going, and we're, we're not quite there yet. Once we get the report in, uh, they'll begin working on it. Um, as mentioned, we've started working with the law department on, on getting proposed language for an easement to access the, the city piece, uh, here. Um, and we, we don't expect that to present any kind of a holdup. Um, we are scheduled to meet with the Harbor Commission, uh, next week because it's, uh, uh, on the water. Um, and hopefully get their support, uh, next Wednesday. Um, we've had conversations with the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association, um, trying to get a meeting scheduled up for, for them and their membership. And it looks like that is gonna occur on August 3rd in the evening, um, which we look forward to. Um, the, on the engineering front, um, we've talked with, um, Wilbur Garion and DPW. Uh, he's given us some preliminary feedback, hasn't yet started his sort of a review in earnest on the application, intends to get that going um, shortly. So hopefully we can get their sign off, uh, with respect to traffic. So as you know, I mean, so you've got the city's got the, the TPM, their, their own traffic engineers. There's been, there's an outside traffic engineer that this has been referred to as well. Um, and the DOT gets to say, uh, on this project, uh, as, as well. So there's, there's quite a number of cooks in the kitchen. Um, and we are, we've had lots of discussions, um, with everyone other than the state. Um, and per primarily surrounding, um, what the, the best, um, uh, the best roadway improvement would be at the intersection of Gregory, um, and Cemetery where it's, I don't know, it's like a triangle or sort of a roundabout, uh, currently, and what, what that will look like. Um, we, we think and hope that we're close to, um, to having that finalized. Um, and, and I think so that we don't get things delayed, um, further with or without, uh, getting everybody on the same page. You know, we'll get a traffic report in in the next two weeks or so to you. Um, and then we hope to be able to, um, get the, uh, peer review, um, you know, finish the peer review and, and get DOT's, uh, approval, uh, as well. And that in, in many respects, because what the, exactly what those roadway improvements look like will affect our curb cuts. And where the curb cut goes could have significant impact on what the structure looks like, um, because there's an entrance to the, the sort of below grade or the, the, the ground level parking. Um, and so that, that can really change the architecture. And so we've sort of on the architectural side, we, we have been moving forward, and you're gonna hear from Colin on that. But in some respects, that's been held up because we'd like to have things finalized on the curb cut for our property to get the architecture, um, finalized. Um, the, at the last meeting, there was a question about how far back, uh, the, on East Avenue, the traffic engineers, um, looked at the traffic volumes and the intersections. Um, and that, that went back to the Winfield intersection, so essentially up to the, the railroad tracks there. Um, and it includes that Winfield intersection. Um, so that will, of course, be part of the traffic report, and all of the numbers have been done. The traffic counts are done. We're just waiting on. Um, they can't run it through their system until they know what the, um, roadway is gonna look like, um, for the as-built. Um.
Attorney Blank, is that the only, uh, direction you're looking at? Are you looking, for example, at, um, traffic down Fifth Street and across, uh, all the way across to First for Mike?
We've looked at.
During, uh, from South Norwalk?
So I can, let me, I'll, I'll tell you the, I believe, and again, I believe I'm correct on this, and I say that with about 95% accuracy with Mike or Greg, the traffic engineers, we, we would know for sure. But I'm, I'm, I'm very confident that they've looked at, uh, the East Avenue and Winfield, um, that, that intersection we just talked about, East Avenue at Rowan and Gregory, uh, East Avenue at Van Zant, East Avenue at Cemetery, Gregory at Cemetery, Gregory at Emerson and Roger Square, and Gregory at Roger Square Rowan. So I don't believe that it goes back to the numbered, uh, streets on East, uh, off of Gregory.
Steve, can you have a, a conversation with our reviewer? Just asking if, uh, that should be looked at? People who might be coming across the Stroffalino Bridge, down Seaview, uh, making, um, a left on, uh, on, um, uh, First, uh, and, uh, and then making, uh, that right turn. That'll take him to Fifth and then a left, uh, down, down to the development. I mean, it happens to be the way I go to the beach, and I live in Silvermine. Um, but, but that, the, that may have more to do with the work that's being done on, on East Avenue uh, than anything else. But I, I think someone ought to at least just take a look at it.
Yeah, I can have them check. I, I, I do know that early on, uh, the applicant's traffic consultant reached out to city staff about the intersections they wanted analyzed, and TMP did provide, um, comments that they had, the applicant's, uh, consultant said, here, here's what we anticipate looking at, and, uh, TMP did say also, look at these intersections as well. So I, I know that the city staff has looked at what they wanted, but I, I can't recall if that specific intersection was analyzed or not.
And I think that what I've just gave you was the result of that meeting with city staff for the list of intersections. And I mean, I look, anecdotally, I'll tell you, I, I drive through where, what, what the chairman just mentioned. Uh, probably three to 10 times a week in both directions, and I've never had an, an issue there. Um, I, I may have had an inter, an issue at Winfield, but not, but not there. Um, so I don't, I, I suspect that's not gonna be a, a traffic issue.
That's precisely why I use it. You know, because it is relatively, yeah, traffic-free.
Sure. Um, so, um, for, um, for the architecture, um, and, and, and Colin will give you that, we'll go through the sort of details for you. And there has been a lot of back and forth with, uh, again, you have a peer review architect on board on this. Um, and there's been in-person meeting and, and a lot of, uh, telephone and email back and forth, uh, between Bruce Beinfield's office and, and the peer reviewer. And I think that they have refined the plans and, and made it quite a bit of improvement thus far. Um, I will, I will say that, you know, um, I think the chairman, I think your words, Lou, were, were a wow factor. Or, or maybe, maybe Mr. Cantor said, looking for something sexy. I don't know, somebody, there were those kinds of words we're, we're throwing about, about. It would be nice to, to see that this project had that, um, going on for it. And, um, and so like, you know, for somebody like me, the, looking at these black and white drawings, if you, even if the building actually has a wow factor, I wouldn't know, and, and it can sometimes be, be hard to, to see that, um, with, with, with where we are in the renderings. And, and so again, I'll let Colin kind of go through it, and I think they have made a lot of improvements. But I would ask that you give us the benefit of the doubt until we have some color renderings, and you can really see the, the, the contours and the detail on here, which, which I think is, is much greater than what, um, you see on a lot of projects. And, and I am certain that if you do a loop around that Cemetery Street, um, uh, the cemetery, and you compare what's proposed for this building, um, to what surrounds it, this, this is gonna be the diamond. Um, so I guess with, with that, um, I will pass the buck off to, um, to Colin.
Thank you, Adam. Um, appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Uh, great to be back in front of you. Uh, as Mr. Blank noted, uh, we've been working with the architectural peer review and, um, in developing the elevations, uh, a little bit more, uh, fully. Uh, we still have some gaps that we need to work out. Uh, so it, it's an evolving process, but we've made progress. Let me, uh, share my screen. Ryan, I don't think I'm getting permission to share.
Shouldn't be able to, Colin.
There, there it is. I just, it just popped up. Might have just been delayed.
It's not up on ours yet.
Okay. Can you see at this point? Okay, wonderful. Um, so this is the, uh, the elevation as it sits, and they look fairly similar, one of the, um, but we have made refinements, and I've got another slide that's gonna show them side by side. But uh, one of the comments we received earlier had to do with the overall length of the building. Um, it is a 290-foot facade, but that is broken up fairly substantially into smaller segments that are very um, in line with the massings of the buildings, uh, around the cemetery and, um, actually smaller, uh, for these, these blocks. So uh, this market building here, about 40 feet, that's more or less in line with, um, the facade massing of the Station House Restaurant. Uh, this Three Sisters, uh, facade, uh, again, it's broken up into three separate facades, and they, there is, um, a plain stepping there. So the, the facades are, are stepped, and you do also have the, the front porch and the, uh, and the stoops that are projecting forward. So there's multiple layers there that we're playing with, and there's also these, um, you can see my cursor highlight there, these recesses between the buildings that are deeper, uh, six feet or greater, uh, in depth that, that provide, uh, shadow lines and, and breaks between the, the main elements of the buildings. So, um, that's broken up, and that's about 86 feet, uh, more competitive with the, the laundry, uh, mat across the street in terms of the continuous frontage. Um, or, uh, 234, 230, 80th Avenue is about 100 feet. That's the, the, um, buildings next to, uh, the Station House, just south of that. Uh, this building, which we're calling the mansion, the, uh, the roofline has been, um, dropped so that the, the eve is much lower. Uh, and the dormers have been dropped down a level as well. So that reduces the massing and the apparent, uh, presence of that building on the street. Uh, it does have more roof, and, um, that's been some of the refinements that we've made. And we've also increased the depth and, and removed the balconies from this, uh, space between the buildings to really pull them apart a little bit and create that, that depth of, of plane. We're in discussions with the, the peer reviewers, the, the best way to treat this corner building, but as a visual, uh, reference is what we're trying to emulate. Um, we're really trying to take our cues from local architecture like the Winter Pouse and similar structures. Uh, this is in Rowayton, uh, those of you aren't familiar with it, but three stories, very similar to what we're trying to do. It's also elevated from the street. So uh, the height and massing, very consistent with what we're trying to do. The, the, um, the distance across the front is consistent with what we're portraying, and the overall, uh, length is consistent with the depth of the Winter Pouse. So, um, this, this main facade from here to here, I don't know if you can see my cursor moving, but, uh, where the shop front is, is probably about the same, uh, distance as the Winter Pouse. And then this, this wing, we've been back and forth with the design consultant, just as to what the best way to make this, uh, subservient to the main massing volume. So we, we're just trying to work that out, come to a, a beneficial com- composition there. It's also worth noting that the, um, the zoning, uh, does allow residential structures to be 30 and 35 feet with, uh, 38 and 40-foot maximum heights, uh, in the surrounding zones. So ours, our established maximum height, uh, for the building, I believe, is, uh, 40s, 40 feet to the midpoint, uh, 45 feet. So we're, we're in line with what a maximum height residential structure could be, a little bit taller, but, but not much, and definitely in line with other structures surrounding the, uh, the green. Uh, this is the two elevations, um, compared. So again, we're developing the, uh, the Italianate building be a little bit more like the Rowayton structure. Uh, the recesses are more pronounced, and we've, we've removed the balconies and some of them, and added a pitch roof, uh, conceal some of the, the roof space beyond, lowered the gambrel roof and, and, um, lowered the eve line. We've added these, um, stoops, and so further refining the composition there, done a little bit of work to the, to the entablatures, uh, at the top, cornices, and then we've added more detail to the facade here. Changed the window composition a little bit, added this, um, rondelle window. And then added a little pitch roof here as well, worked on the, uh, passage, as it were, um, between Cemetery Street and the, um, the public courtyard, um, beyond. Just as a, as a point of reference, uh, this is the, the church, uh, which is also 290 feet, uh, just a little bit further north on East Avenue. And we feel like our facade is gonna vary quite a bit more than this. Whether it will be taller, it's gonna be a lot more varied, but it's a similar in length, and that just, um, gives you a sense of the, the, the scale of what a, a very plain and straight facade, uh, looks like. Uh, the other building that I wanted to show, just as a reference, is this is, um, a little amalgamation of buildings that we did in Rowayton, uh, several years ago, and, you know, we're looking to fit the buildings together in a very similar fashion and bring these, these various forms together, uh, in a way that makes a larger building seem much smaller, and we think we've achieved that. Uh, East Norwalk has a lot of great, good-looking buildings, and we think in the end, we're gonna be one of them. So that's really all I have to say on the architecture. And we're still developing, but thank you very much for, uh, for your time. Take any questions if you have.
And Colin, um, can you just, or I can just say, but that
Yep.
on the smaller building on the corner of Gregory, um, that, that I, I know that, yeah, and that, on that building, that you've been working with the, the peer review architect and making some changes to that. They just have not yet made their way into any, any drawings, right?
Correct. One, one, one of the big things he suggested was in this area right here, if you can see where I'm pointing. Uh, he asked that we, um, look at like a glass porch or some element there. So we've got that on the, on the drawing board, and we're working on integrating that, uh, into the drawings, hopefully for the next round and for the, the public, uh, public hearing.
I think that's, that's the extent of our presentation. If there's questions for us, we can answer them, and if we can't, we can get answers to you. Um, otherwise, you can certainly get in touch with staff, and they can let us know any concerns or questions you have, and we'll be prepared for it the next, uh, meeting.
I don't have any questions for you. Do, uh, any of the other commissioners?
Lou.
Go, go ahead, Tammy.
Hi, thank you. Um, Attorney Blank or, um, Mr. Gother? I'm just curious, um, I went over and walked around the property and the, the public access to the little bit of land that the city owns and, and the little, you know, tiny bit of waterfront that the property has, um, right at the moment are not inviting, appealing, anything. And so I don't know if we're kind of using this as a little bit of like a bait and switch. Oh, yeah, we want this big building so we can have this little bit of public access, because it really doesn't look like the public is gonna walk back there and access it at all. Um, so I'm just wondering, you know, could you just explain that a little bit more, how you see that as an asset to the city?
Well, that, just so, let me pull up. I just said, so, uh, so we're clear, there's, there's a public courtyard here that's on, that's on our property that we. that's on, that's on our property that we will construct and will be open to the public in connection with this project. On the, on the city component, you know, it, I guess it's, it's just, it's not under our control to build it out. But we will, they, there is going to be, this will be immediate. And the, the city piece can be whenever the city's ready to do it. And we've, we've proposed that there would be an ADA access as well as a ramp access. So you've got two different ways to get there. One off cemetery, one off of East Avenue. So yes, it's at the back of the site. I, I mean, it's hard. What are we gonna do? You know, the, the pond is at the back of the site. You're gonna have to go through the site to get there. I don't think there's a way around that. We're providing two separate access points on the different ends of our property to get there. We're, we're, we're likely providing public parking for access as well as the on-street parking and then pedestrian access. So I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's much more that we can do given that the, the pond is at the back of the site.
And those, those access pathways will be landscaped and improved. And so I, I do think if anyone kind of walks the neighborhood or goes on exercise in neighborhood, this will be a nice, nice detail for them.
Tammy, to your concern, I, I think there is a much better answer. I don't see why we can't ask the developer to build out that city property. I'm sure the city would not object to having that properly landscaped with some, with some seating and, and perhaps other amenities as part. This is a large project. It's certainly large enough so that it's not unreasonable to ask the developer to do that. And I would say that if the other commissioners agree with me on that, we, we should, we should, we should make that clear to the developer that that's what they're, we're looking for them to do as part of this project.
But if, Matt, and if it's, if it's sort of okay, I think what I would say is, is why don't, why don't we take a look at that and not, not sort of give you a, a hard yes or no right now and and, and, and see what, and you may know better than I already, Matt, but you know, we're not in a I think we can take a little time.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of burden on this project. This, this is not something that we're thrown in there to get the bonus density. And there's a lot of other things on the list to get the, the density. This is not one. We just thought it was the right thing to do. To provide the access. You know, if we kind of go down the path to try to design that, that public piece of property now and tie it to this approval, I fear that this will be a two-year process to get approval.
Steve, can I ask you to speak with the city departments involved? And see how difficult or how easy it might be to, to make something like that happen?
Sure. And I've had preliminary conversations with both the law department and Wrexham Park, so I can further that along.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you have a question?
Yes, I, I think it should be clear to the commission and the public that any waterfront property in Norwalk, and I know the applicant knows this, but I don't think it came through in the question and answer period we just had. That any waterfront zoning approval in Norwalk requires public access so that there is public access provided, and I'm not gonna offer an opinion on the, the public land behind there. At this point, I, I just see that there is a walkway provided that is a requirement. And I want to just have that confirmed by Steve Kleppen because I think in nineteen eighty-one is when that passed. And that, that's how the Harbor Loop Trail and parts of the Norwalk of the Valley Trail have been put together. It's been piecemeal, obviously. You know, as each, as, as projects get approved, but if you go across from City Hall on East Avenue, there's almost a continuous waterfront trail from that. Obviously, in this case, this would be dependent around Mill Pond on other things, but isn't this included in the waterfront? Public access requirement that looks like it's already provided here, but I just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Yeah, I'd have to look to see the, if, I know what you're referring to in, in, in like the Five Mile River and, and then along Norwalk River. I'd have to just double check to make sure it's applicable elsewhere.
But that doesn't seem at all to be in contention. The developer has said from the start that they, they were going to provide access to that piece of property. What we've been talking about separately is having that property developed by the developer. And I, I think that Attorney Blank's willingness to bring that back to the developer and start a discussion among their staff is the right next step.
And to be clear, I was just saying the zoning approval would require public access to the waterfront, but not not to the, it, it wouldn't be required to the property that's behind there. You know, that it would just be required to have public access on the water, on the backside of the property facing the water. I just want to make, have clarity on that. It does look like there is a walkway. I, I'm just saying regardless of the city property and that being turned into anything else, there will be public access to the, to the back so people could view the water, Mill Pond from the back. And I just want to make sure that, as everyone knows, that's a requirement of, of our zoning code. I, but I'm not a hundred percent sure it applies in this location. But it seems like it, it applies, it's applied everywhere else that we've had waterfront property. Certainly coastal, coastal title property in Norwalk over the last forty-one years.
Does anybody else want to comment on this?
If I, if I can go again after anybody else, Lou.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, sorry, I don't mean to take anybody else's time. It, I, I do want to say that I appreciate that the applicant reduced the, the the massing of the building. I think two hundred and ninety feet is really long. And if you look at the church that you pulled up on East Avenue, that's only one story. So it has a much different feel as two hundred and ninety feet versus three stories. So I think the reducing of the massing is great. And as for the Mill Pond back there, I wouldn't personally call that waterfront. It's sort of like swampy and brackish up there. It's not as if it's on Long Island Sound or on the East River. So it's not like it's prime real estate. And I'm not trying to make this difficult for the applicant, but because this building is so big, yes, you do have that little garden or patio area off of East Avenue, but most people are going to be coming around the cemetery and you're going to drive right by. So maybe people that are sweet Ashley's are gonna walk across the street, go down and, and walk over there. But it just seems it would be a nice opportunity for the applicant to do something nice with that, that they could be proud of. They've done other, you know, landscaping things in more urban areas. So to leave it nothing, and the way it looks now is horrible. So I would advocate that something be done there. That's all. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll just add that an ecological restoration is definitely in order for that whole end of the pond, removing the phragmities, which is that invasive reed that grows up, you know, eight to ten feet, that some people think is natural and native, but it's not. And rest, ecological restorations involve removing that and replacing it with native plants. And, you know, there, I think on social media, there's a lot of bird watching that goes on on Mill Pond. A lot of photographs are published there. It's a lot of wading birds, et cetera. So it's actually a prime bird watching spot. Which is a valid reason for public access as well. Don't underestimate the power of bird watchers in our society. They may seem like they just hold their binoculars in quiet, but they're not.
I won't underestimate the mic.
Maybe that was too much information. Lou, you're muted.
Apologies. I was saying if, if that's all, Attorney Blank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item B twenty-two-two dash twenty-five R. Board of Education zoning regulation text amendment revise Articles eighty, ninety, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and forty for regulations pertaining to maximum allowable height setback for structures parking and minimum parking requirements for public school and municipal issues and structures. And this will require a public hearing. This is a preliminary review. Attorney Blank, are you representing the Board of Education?
Yes, sir. So hi, I'm again still Adam Blank. So it's, we've got some proposed text amendments for public school and municipal buildings that are essentially intended to streamline the construction and approval process for school projects going forward. I, as many of you know me, but I, not all of you do on a personal level. You know, I'm pretty excited to be here tonight. I've got a twelve-year-old who just recently graduated from CMS in South Norwalk where I served as the PTA president for a few years. And there was, you know, lots of talk about getting a new CMS and putting money into the schools since she was in kindergarten. And it really is great to see the city finally moving forward with quite a number of school construction projects, both new or sort of gut renovation projects. And so, but we, but, but I think Alan Lowe and the city has seen that, that through the, the projects that have gone forward thus far and some of them that are coming down the pipe that, that, that the city could really benefit from some flexibility. That's the way I would describe it in the zoning regulations as they relate to school and municipal construction projects. And to, and that flexibility will make for a much more efficient approval process for the city. And I'll go through that in detail in a minute with me as, as I just introduced it, but is, is Alan Lowe who I expect most of you know, Building and Facilities Manager for the city. I think is Dan or Jim, Dan Phillips or Jim Giuliani maybe on who is the program manager for school construction projects. So I'll give you an overview on what we're proposing and why and, and try to answer questions that you have, as will Alan. And we're hoping that you'll place us on the August fourth agenda for public hearing. The, so the school construction projects are, they're fairly complicated. And timing's pretty important on them. And, you know, you're dealing with both the, the city and, and Alan trying to come up with, you know, the, the actual physical buildings and the Board of Ed trying to have a say in, you know, making sure that what, what's physically built will match the educational needs. While you're trying to fit that into the state's sort of cost reimbursement program, which require certain things be certain sizes for reimbursement and it, it, it's fairly nuanced. And all the while with deadlines to meet or missing out on funding for a year or so, which over the last few years, literally a delay of a year can be a five million dollar cost to the city. The delays are really a big deal. And it's complicated to design these schools when you don't know what the costs were gonna be and you don't know when you might get your approvals. The, the, another obstacle that the city faces is that, you know, by and large, and with the new I, I'm not sure what they're called, what they're, what they're calling it, but the new proposed South Norwalk Neighborhood School is on a new parcel of land, but by and large, these school projects will be done on existing school sites, which means you've got to tie all of this into what do we do about the kids that are there now during school? Where do we locate this building that will be the least disruptive for the students? And, and, and can occur. So it's not like you're, you're typically taking a empty parcel of land and saying, great, we're gonna plunk the school down in the middle of the lot. You're gonna have to position it in a way often that, that doesn't interfere with ongoing needs of the existing school on the, on the property. So so, so we've come up with a, a number of text changes that we do think would by and large sort of make this, make future school projects unlikely to require lots of variances, which has sort of become more the norm. Or require text changes on every application filed. Again, that's not a guarantee that you're not gonna see variances filed or additional text changes on specific applications. It's hard to predict that. But the, this is intended to, to sort of cure the, 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 the most likely reoccurring issues that the city faces. So I'd like to just maybe pull up on screen. Assume that's up for you guys.
Yes.
So I, and I just sort of run through the, the changes and can, you know, shoot questions if you've got them as we go through them. And Alan or I can attempt to answer that. So the, the first involves this Article eighty, which we are proposing to, right now, schools can be up to fifty feet in height in a resident zone. So we are, what we're asking for is some additional height for a building not to exceed sixty-five feet in height. And that the, the stories within that sixty-five feet can be up to four stories. As a practical matter, most schools will not be sixty-five feet in height at any point at all. But certainly for like high schools, that's, that's likely. And again, it's highly unlikely that you would ever see a school proposed that's gonna be sixty-five feet high all the way across. But this, this maximum height refers to any one point on a building. And so it is likely that, that particularly for the high schools that you will have at least a spot here or there that might hit this sixty-five feet, even if the average height is fifty feet or less. The and, and again, I think the, the height, and we'll go through some of the setbacks, but there are pretty hefty setbacks for these buildings. And so even with that additional height, they're not, they're not gonna be up on the street like a residential building would. The, the next proposed change is with respect to accessory structures. And the the accessory structure rules are fairly confusing, at least to me. But what we proposed is that for accessory structures that those be setback forty feet from the frontline and fifteen feet from any side yard property line. And that is fairly in line with residential. But also keep in mind that for accessory buildings, they're not they're limited at height, the same as a residential one would be. So they're not, they're not bigger or taller than you'd have in a residential accessory building. And for the most part, and it may be exclusively, but the only accessory structures that currently exist are like concession stands for the high school, for, for, I think both of the high schools, for the, for the football field, maybe a locker room or a storage area for equipment for the fields. But those are the only But those are the only, I think those are the only accessory structures. Alan can correct me if I'm wrong, that currently exist. And there's no sort of grand plans to have lots of accessory structures. It's just to be able to to cite them, just like you would for a residential and at the same at the same height as a residential accessory structure.
Yeah, sometime potentially, sometimes a school also serves as a community park or or fields. So there's a possibility in future that some 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 of the school site to have a athletic field, like Nathan Hill made of outdoor back, not outdoor bathroom, but accessory bathroom structure. So we're basically talking about one story structure that's the setback lines consistent with residential requirements in terms of setback.
All right, thanks, Alan. And then right now, the for the parking regulations for elementary, it's one and a half per worker employed, same with middle, same with high school. Then high school also has a requirement of one space per four students of school capacity. And what we've proposed is that the requirement simply be one space per worker employed. You know, the the. As a practical matter, again, there there's like at the high school, there there's not going to be a high school that's going to have parking at the minimum. I mean, this is not a private developer, you know, with the with potentially an incentive to provide lesser parking. The city is going to kind of provide the parking that it needs. It's just that the parking that it needs may vary from school to school. And, you know, I think that we'd we'd rather that the the city be able to determine what its parking needs are for a particular building. And then propose that again through a special permit application. These are all special permits. And if you found that the traffic or parking was going to be problematic, then you you wouldn't have to go along with what the city was proposing. But we didn't want to be constrained to having to overbuild parking if it wasn't necessary. But again, for most of the for the elementary and middle schools, you know, we 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 see one and a half spaces per worker, you know, we're going to be able to meet that and we'll exceed that. For our high school, it may be one space per four students. It may be one space for three. It may be one space for six students. It's just, again, we 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 don't want to be tied to that because it it will vary based on what the the needs are. And of course, you know, unlike a housing development, we can control the the parking at the at the school. So if we don't have spaces for students to park, they're not going to get parking passes. They're not going to be able to park there. If there's excess, you know, the juniors get to park there or the seniors or certain seniors, and they get it for a half of a year. But but this the school will easily be able to enforce parking. So there's not going to be an issue with 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 insufficient parking. It doesn't need to be in a zoning reg. So so we've proposed again, the one space per employee. The. Then you've got for building setbacks. The right now, so the we've we've proposed essentially what I will say capping the setbacks on the buildings to an eighty foot front and rear yard setback and a forty foot front setback for all off street parking and loading facilities. So to break that down, first, just dealing with the eighty foot under the current regs, because it's based on the the build the foot, the building's length. You could have a setback requirement of three hundred feet or something that's just incredible. And 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 not necessary, but also really, really difficult to achieve, particularly if you're starting from a a piece of property that has a functioning school on it that you're trying not to demo. And then start from scratch on a new construction. You know, the again, the the new schools will have to be placed somewhere near the somewhere else on the site typically to allow the existing school to operate, at least during some of the construction of the new building, which will often mean that you can't satisfy, you know, hundreds of foot long setbacks. But eighty would far exceed anything for residential property. And the and then the forty foot for off street parking and loading facilities would would still keep you forty feet, you know, essentially a forty foot buffer from the property line, but it would allow there to be some, you know, on on at grade parking or backing areas, loading parking aisles in that forty feet. So you'd have forty foot buffer and then you'd have parking, which again, at forty feet from the property line, you know, if you think about a residential house, that's that's quite a distance to have just a, you know, a car. You're again, we're not talking about tall structures forty feet from the property line. You're talking about parking. The. And and so I guess that's. That's all of them. I will. I will show you just a diagram that we've put together. So at the top half here, so if you look at, you know, a person on the street and you're looking at a typical house in a resident zone with a thirty-five foot max height, again, but it's measured to the midpoint, so the the top, the peak is actually higher. With a forty yard front setback where, you know, you can have a car parked, you know, in the driveway for them. The sightline, this is what the the sightline would look like for a pedestrian. They obviously can see all this, but it's that's what it it looks like. And then I'll zoom out. So this gives you an example of if we took the sixty-five foot maximum building height. And not only did we take it, but we didn't put it at the middle of the building or somewhere further away, but we put it right as close to the the setback as possible with an eighty foot setback. You'd have a sightline where the bill this building would appear, you know, slightly more imposing than the the residents on that same sightline. But where you had the car before, that's entirely a buffer now. And we would proposing allowing cars to be at that forty foot area, which is again on the residential property where you'd have houses. And again, this, we've got a tree great out here, but this also assumes that that there's no landscaping or buffering in here that would actually block your sightline of maybe the car, certainly the top of the building. But that just gives you some perspective of what it would look like with these proposed amendments. That that's the 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 down and dirty on it. If there are questions, Al and I can do our best to respond to them.
Are any of these changes required for any of the projects currently underway or anticipated?
I don't none of them. The the well, the ones that have approvals have approvals, and so they're not required for those. The the new high school does require or or what does require these tax changes or would require variances. And we've not yet analyzed fully the impact of them on the the new neighborhood school, but particularly because that's not actually in a residential zone. And so we're not sure if there's a better or worse for that one yet. But that's where it is.
I think one other thing the city is doing, the boy that excuse me, what it's looking at, it's a we are looking at recently, the city got a got approval for a state reimbursement rate sixty percent. So which is substantial because previously the city paid for new construction is twenty twenty-three percent. I mean, the state reimbursement rate twenty-three percent. Now we're up to sixty percent. So we gave the city a lot better ability to finance major improvement projects. There has been a lot of complaint about from the from the citizens that, you know, school construct, we are not upgrading our school in the timely fashion. So this gives a lot of opportunity. So we are the city and the boy is looking at a twenty-five year plan, look at all our school building and potentially build new buildings. So there are many challenges on the existing site. And one of the critical problem I deal all the time is that, you know, for residential zone, there's nobody out there building sixty thousand square feet in a residential zone. It's very challenging because, you know, the regulation is set up that it's for residential zone, but yet we are building sixty thousand square foot building. It's it's very complicated thing to fit within the existing site as well as, you know, meeting all the zoning requirement. I I think this these these amendment helps us to to respecting the neighborhoods, residential building setback and all, but same time give us some flexibility to do what we have to do to apply education services to the to the neighborhood. Again, so fundamentally, I know high school, we would need, we we if we don't, we we are asking for these texts meant to help us along so that we would not be asking for all these variances. But same time, we are fully aware of the sensitivity of the neighbors and the neighborhood aesthetic on the scale of the neighborhood. So in all high school, we're looking to put like one, one two story building along the street, the fourth story would be the back of the property inside the property. So 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 I get there's still a lot of consideration also in parking. We are proposing right now, I think there's about two hundred and seventy staff members. We are currently parking spaces about four hundred and thirty, I think it is, somewhere around there. The new project will be four hundred and fifty, but current zoning regulation park requires about, I think, a six or eight hundred spaces. So it's it's just real and then we have to come in for variance of parking, but we know we don't use them. And we still enjoy for those special event surface parking. So we're taking all that into consideration with designer projects. Okay, thanks.
Any questions? All right, then we'll schedule this for hearing at our August fourth meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven SPR eighty-three East Avenue LLC eighty-three East Avenue exterior renovation to existing structure report and recommended action. Is that Attorney Sachi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at the long firm of Carmody Torrent Sandec and Hennessy. Our office is ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stanford. Present tonight as well as Ray Mastriani, he's on the screen. He's one of the owners of eighty-three East Avenue and also Robert France Council to eighty-three East Avenue LLC. If you have any questions of either, they I'm sure they'd be happy to answer them. Just by way of background, the property at eighty-three East Avenue is owned by eighty-three East Avenue LLC. It's District One, Block sixty-two, Lot Two, and it is located in the East Avenue Village District. The building that exists today is that if you come up East Wall Street, traveling eastbound toward what used to be the Rotary at East Avenue and East Wall Street, it's the rather contemporary building that's directly in front of you as you approach that intersection. So three story office building, it's been occupied by medical office and other conventional office tenants ever since its construction in nineteen sixty-five. And there are on grade parking on the the northern side of the building and on grade parking lot towards the rear. Due to the age of the building, various upgrades and renovations have begun in the interior. And two significant, or I should say four significant upgrades and renovations are to the four towers that exist. There are two towers on the west side of the building. That's the the two towers you see as you approach East Avenue from East Wall Street. There are also two towers on the east side of the building, and those encompass stairwells and elevators predominantly. Over time, it's become apparent that those stairwells, elevator shafts, and the structures surrounding them are in need of work. There is water that's coming in through the the roof and through the those structures. So we need to do some my client needs to do some work to the building to to address those issues. As part of the proposal, they would like to change the color configuration on the force, the four towers. And there were some plans that were submitted to you that show a dark green and a light green, one color for each of the towers. That would be the the desired color combination with some changes to the exterior materials. Your Village District Consultant has reviewed the proposal and we reviewed the Village District proposed, the Village District Consultants Memo of July thirteenth. And many of the comments, we certainly agree with. Certainly, there's no need to create a new aesthetic for this building. This is a contemporary building set in the middle of some historic structures. It is in contemporary in design, but it also acts as a nice set off for the other structures on either side of it and doesn't compete with it. It acts as kind of a a set off of other well preserved and maintained structures on East Avenue. So the district consultant suggested that either one color combination be used, the existing color combination, or that if we were to use a different combination, that there be one singular coloration of those those structures as part of this this proposal. And they suggested the gray would be probably more appropriate, given some of the colors callets on other structures on East Avenue. My client would prefer to have two distinct colors to the two grays that were shown on the plans, one is a medium gray and one a dark gray. And that those two colors would be used on the front two column, the front two towers and the back two towers. But should this commission deem that that be something that you don't desire and you would like to have the Village District Consultants suggestions implemented? We can certainly live with that. We would only ask that whatever that color is, that we be able to make the choice of it of of it, be it the medium gray or the dark gray, and leave that to our discretion. That's the long and short of of the presentation. There is no addition to the building, no new stories, no expansion. It will remain as is, it will just those towers will be upgraded, improved, waterproofed, and then we'd like to have a different coloration kind of set them off a little bit. Do you have any questions of me, Mr. Mastriani or Mr. France? We're happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I looked at that carefully, and I really think they should stay white because you're going to be changing the texture and the siding, which to me is a, you know, is a is a nice improvement. But the white blends in to the modern buildings. And I've looked at a lot of modern buildings in my life, and the black towers are gray. I'm calling them black, they're gray, either light gray or dark gray, either white, they just seem very heavy on the green. And I really strongly feel that they should stay white. Is there a reason why you wanted the contrast? Because there's no windows in those buildings. There's no fenestration, to use an architectural term. There's no depth, you know, there's no detail. And and to me, they just look like big dark monoliths on the front of, you know, it's decent building. It's not great, but the it seems to me like you're drawing attention to a building. Maybe that's what you want to do. But can you justify why the color change? I mean, why not just leave them white, but upgrade the the siding, which I think would look would be an improvement from what's there for sure. I mean, there's no question they need to be, you know.
Certainly, Commissioner Moushak, one of the reasons is the window frames are going to be changed, and those are going to be made a darker color. So we wanted to kind of complement the change to the window frames, which will be darker. And you're absolutely right, they're I we thought that there would it would be somewhat valuable and architecturally and aesthetically pleasing to have a slightly different contrast that building to call some attention to it. And perhaps that was the reason why your village district district consultant thought that either either keep the the beige or the off white, or if you'd like to do that and call some attention and and make it a little more prominent, to select one color of those towers other than the white. That's the rationale behind it, to give it a little more interest to a building that just kind of blends into the background. And it could also be seen as a distinctive building that when you come up East Avenue and say, oh, that's that more contemporary building. Now look on either side or the more traditional buildings that it kind of sets it off and gives a someone coming up East Avenue, come up coming up West and East, East Wall Street, the ability to make that distinction and and notice the other buildings, perhaps even better, since there would be that distinction on those front two on those front two towers. I think it it adds something to that that building to set it set it off a little bit in its own right as a contemporary structure.
I I think that, to be fair, I think the rendering we looked at looked darker colors. I didn't see I don't remember a beige or a light color. I remember a dark gray and then a really dark gray that's like almost like a black. I mean, like charcoal maybe. But to me, that either one looked high contrast and seemed heavy to me as a landscape architect. I am not an architect. I don't play one on TV. I don't even pretend, but I am used to looking at buildings. I don't play one on TV, I don't even pretend, but I am used to looking at buildings. And I just thought white would be great. Maybe a beige would be nice too, but I didn't know that was an option. Sorry. If it was, I apologize.
You're absolutely correct, the the, excuse me for interrupting you, Commissioner Williams. Mr. Mushak, the the drawings that were submitted did show the towers in a light gray and a dark gray. We did not provide to you an option that the Village District Consultant suggested, which was basically either leaving it as the current coloration or making it a beige. We we submitted a plan that showed two different gray colorations. And I, and in just responding to the the Village District Consultant's suggestion, which was option two, to if there were some cues taken from other structures on East Avenue that had white and black, white and gray. So they suggested that if you're looking to to, in this discussion, to accommodate the desires of the applicant to make it a different color, that perhaps one of those grays be the one selected. If you think a lighter gray would be more appropriate, it would not be as as stark or as harsh. I'm certain my client would be interested and and would be amenable to to that type of coloration, if that's, that palette is better for you.
Galen and Darius.
Personally, there, I don't see anything interesting or distinguished or I can't understand why you would call attention to these elevator towers. They, there's nothing beautiful about them, there's nothing interesting about them. And it seems to me having it all, this building all the same color kind of makes sense. Having those towers stand out is is a, you know, like the the trim on the older buildings are showing something interesting. You know, this trim is beautiful, it's interesting. These towers are certainly not. I just, I think that's, I think it looks horrible personally.
That's the beauty of a contemporary building set within a a street of historic structures dating the eighteen hundreds. How do you set that building off, yet not overwhelm the others around it and complement it, since the architecture is so vastly different than those that surround it?
No, it's beautiful at all. I think it's really, but this is one woman's opinion.
Well, that's what we're trying to achieve. How do we balance that to to give some attention to the building, yet not overwhelm everything around it? And perhaps use it as a way to to not only to call attention to the others around it because it's so different.
I I don't think you achieve anything like that with this, frankly. You know, their elevator towers, they, and then that's what they look like. And so calling attention to them just means that everyone goes, oh, my God, look at that, they got two elevator towers. I I don't understand it as a improvement.
Well, we're just, we're also taking into consideration your Village District Consultant's suggestion. And there were two different, vastly different opinions that the the consultant suggested.
Having at the, you know, beige, you know, having at the same color as the building, that was one of his choices. So I would opt for that first choice.
Darius and then Tammy.
My question's already been answered.
Okay, Tammy.
Thank you, Lou. Hi, Attorney Sachi and Mr. Mastriani. I've been in that building, and I was always sort of curious what those towers were in the front. And then I think the sad thing is that there were two nice flowering fruit trees, or I don't know if they're crab apples or cherries, but those seem to have gone missing. And I do agree with the other commissioner's sentiment that the building, I think, is just more pleasant looking, having a more continuous surface front. And also from my background in residential real estate, I think gray is actually on its way out, and it's not on its way in, even though we are seeing a lot of black trim windows. So it might be something that two years from now, you go, gee, I wonder why we painted those gray, because gray is not anymore. I mean, that's just an observation from my residential real estate experience. And thank you for, you know, making improvements to the building, but maybe also too, you could plant back those trees that are gone.
A further comment if no one else wants to go. Thank you.
Is there, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? I just, I'll throw in my two cents, I agree with most of the other speakers that and I I don't mean this in a negative way. I want the building to disappear. I I I I want, I want the the older buildings to be highlighted. So I prefer that we we have a single color on the entire building and that that be a lighter color, as has been suggested.
If if I may, would the light, would a lighter color be, would we be able to? If if my client is is desirous of the gray, would a lighter gray be satisfactory? Or would you leave that to us as long as the coloration is is lighter than what we showed? And I'd hate to have to come back to you with with new color callets. When we come up with something, it give us that, the opportunity to work, to come up with what what I think is just, you'd like a lighter coloration rather being so, than it being so stark.
My my reading of the other commissioners is something in the in the white scale, not in the gray scale.
I think the same, sorry to interrupt, but I think we were trying to say, or at least I am, and I think everybody else, that the tower should be the same color as the body of the building. Whatever, whatever white, you know, whites, there's a hundred and fifty whites probably that you can use. So some whites are actually called gray, but you know, they're 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 also called cream, you know, there's dove white, all these. There's a million whites, not a hundred and fifty, there's actually a million. It's just a, it's it's all how the human eye sees it. But anyway, the point is, it should match the body of the building, I think. And I I want to add, there is a black and white theme on, in the surrounding historical buildings, and the black is usually, you know, given to the shutters on a white building. That's traditional New England. Someone, I have no idea why they're doing it, but they're replacing the windows on these historic buildings with the black frame trendy far, you know, modern farmhouse windows, which looks ridiculous on a New England green, because those windows are just a fad that everybody kind of wants in Westport, you know, on their fancy two million dollar farmhouse. And they're, I literally, they're ripping out perfectly good windows to put in black framed windows, and they did this with a bunch of buildings on the green to to create, and I'm like, that's going to look so dated, it's going to look like, you know, the the joke post-modern buildings that we all look at from the eighties and just cringe when we look at them, because all those buildings are going to be dated. I agree with Tammy, it's it's kind of on its way out almost at this point. And and I know you're referring to gray, but I mean, it's a, it's those black window frames that everybody wants. And and I'm like, it's a, to me, it's an abomination to stick them on a New England, you know, a hundred and fifty-year-old eighteenth or nineteenth-century building, because they're not appropriate. They didn't have black framed windows back then. So
That's, that may be true, but the building is only nineteen sixty-five.
I realize, I know, but you're just trying to put it in context of the rationale was to pick up the black and white of the surrounding historical buildings. And I'm like, that black and white is actually, except if, unless it's for shutters, is actually just a kind of a bad trend that I that I don't see emulating on on another building regardless of the year. So I'm getting into the weeds here. I think it ought to be the same color as the body.
So if if you would be kind enough to give me some direction for Mr. Mastriani and for Mr. France, rather than have to resubmit to you another color palette and have to undergo yet another design review by the village consultant and pay the fee for that, is there a way that we might be able to move this along with my client's input and staff's input so that we don't have to trouble you with with this, once again, with differentiation in in colors that would be largely what you're asking for?
I think, I think you've heard what we've had to say. I think if you submit to the staff, the staff has also heard what we have to say. So I think that would be sufficient.
That would be fine.
You don't, you don't need to come before us again.
And I think we are avoiding gray and leaning towards white or some variation on white is kind of, I think, what we will say. Maybe beige, if it's a nice beige. I know this is all subjective.
Mike, don't, don't, don't muddy the water.
I'm sorry. Anyway. But the intent is good, I think the applicant has, you know, fixing up that building is a great idea, and we're obviously repairing it. And nobody wants to discourage that, for sure.
Well, we'll, we'll speak to one another tomorrow and and see where we come out on this. And then I will work with Mr. Kleppin and and Mr. Baker after chatting with the client to see where we'd like to go.
Thanks, fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Well, our staff was correct. We've gotten through this fairly quickly. It's only seven twenty-six. I want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our July seventh meeting.
Motion.
Okay, Tammy has moved, is there a second?
I I actually didn't get a chance to read it yet, so I'm going to stay.
Okay, that's fine. Second?
I I'll second, but I want to make a change.
Okay, why don't you tell us what that is?
On page thirteen, it says it's in the discussion about with ninety-three Winfield Street. I want to, here, here's the way the sentence should read in the second paragraph. Here's how it read, and here's how I wanted to read. There was a discussion about making the trees larger to help soften the buildings. Mr. Mushak suggested some different types of trees, and the applicant agreed to them. Those two sentences, that's inaccurate, actually. And I think Diana does a great job with the minutes, so this is just a little simple mistake. Because I didn't suggest different types of trees. Here's how the sentence should read. There was a suggestion by Mr. Mushak about making the perimeter trees larger to help soften the buildings, and the applicant agreed to them. So there were no, no different varieties. So you want me to read that again, Diana? Sorry.
No, I can just get it from the recording.
Oh, good, yes, okay, great, thanks. It's a, it's a big, that's a big difference to me, because I didn't actually suggest, I was reading off the plan list that was on the plans that were submitted, and I was just suggesting they all be bigger and not not actually changing the varieties. But I, I think I could see where the confusion came from.
Tammy, is that, Tammy, is that acceptable to you?
It's acceptable to me, yes, thank you.
Okay, then.
Diana?
Go ahead.
Hey, can can you forward me those minutes again, please?
I think staff can forward them to you.
I'll get those to JJ.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's do it with a show of hands, all those in favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have two abstentions, Darius and JJ.
And then Louis, I just want to jump back and we should do a resolution for eighty-three East Ave, however you want to or we want to word it.
Do do you have suggested language?
Yeah, I'll pull up, we can kind of edit this. So we can leave this as in keeping with
Okay. Motion to approve. Okay, Galen has moved and Darius seconded. Again, with a show of hands, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, one abstention.
Tammy, that was, were you in?
I was in the approved, sorry, I was
Okay.
Wrong hand.
All right.
Was somebody, I'm sorry, in opposition or abstain?
Abstain. JJ abstain. Okay, comments of the director, Steve? You're muted. You're Steve.
Yeah, I started sharing a screen and then all my buttons disappeared, so it took me a second.
Can you make that a little larger?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we were talking, just forecasting down the road a little bit. We talked about thirty-two weed and continuing the public hearing till the August fourth meeting. You'll recall, we had the discussion about the EMS antenna on the property in Row Eight, that's scheduled for public hearing on August fourth. We also have the Board of Ed, which we just talked about, and then we have three to four other items that we need to get rectified between August fourth and August seventeenth. There's one other one that's not on this list, probably a small one. And I think there's a good possibility that Wegmans isn't quite ready on August seventeenth, so we'll probably follow a similar exercise. We were talking internally about potentially having a special meeting the week of, and I don't know if it's August, we threw out August twenty-fourth as just a start date for the discussion, but that week we were thinking it might be a good idea to have Wegmans. I don't know if one cemetery is going to be ready at that point in time. That's another possibility. We also do need to have the public hearing on the ADUs. So we have at the very least those two items, and there probably will be a couple of more as well. So I didn't want to, I know there was like, the last meeting we had two weeks ago was pretty lengthy. We went, you know, over four hours, four and a half hours. So to try to avoid that, especially if we're going to have some of these larger public hearings, it might be a good idea to have an additional meeting that week. I'm going to just gauge everybody's interest and availability for for something like that.
I agree that it makes sense to have an extra meeting, you know, to spread it out over three meetings instead of trying to jam it all into two. And I am available.
I have no interest, but it's necessary, so I'll be there.
If it matters, Steve, I will not be here for the fourth.
August fourth?
August fourth, yeah.
Steve?
All right, if you, if everybody wants to, needs to Okay, I can send an email out tomorrow just confirming that that week, if people have conflicts, if you can't check your schedule right now, that's fine.
Could you just explain, please? Like after our last meeting, when we heard the whole Wegmans presentation again, we heard the whole school presentation again. And I appreciate that there be, the public hadn't heard what we heard probably. But that took up, you know, probably an hour plus of the meeting. Are they going to give the same review the next time? Or whichever date it is, whether it's the fourth or the seventeenth?
We we don't know what they plan, but we're not going to listen to it. On on weed, all we're interested in at this point, I believe, it is to hear about the traffic, and I think same is true for Wegmans. Those are, those are the issues.
Okay, so they're not going to give the whole presentation all over again?
God, no.
Yeah, they, I can tell you specifically on the Wegmans, and I think what we we we've tried to stress this with the applicants, and I think we need to hold their feet to the fire. If they're, if they want to have an additional initial meeting where they're just proposing the project, they get fifteen minutes, twenty minutes max from start to finish. They shouldn't be giving their entire presentation, then reciting it again at the public hearing. I don't think that's what the intent of of that initial meeting is.
I mean, it's, I think it's good for the public to hear, obviously. But just
Yeah, they they have to do it for the public hearing side if they want to enter it into the record, but they don't need to do it twice, it's unnecessary.
Yeah.
I have a comment about on this subject as well. Tonight on the agenda, it's a public hearing on those two projects. And people may have checked in thinking they could speak. I think as a courtesy to the public, I think as a courtesy to the public, can the agenda say no public, you know, a public hearing can be open to accept like a rebuttal, right? Or a further comment in writing? But we didn't intend on listening to the public tonight, but I think from the agenda, it may have been confusing because it said public hearing. And, and I just worry that people may have, you know, changed their schedule and, and thought maybe they could speak because there was no indication that they couldn't on any of the
Yeah, I want to add to that, Mike. The newspaper said, you know, you get to sound off tonight on Wegmans traffic. You know, it'll be a public hearing. And, you know, so I read that and I thought, I don't think so. You know, this is, that was in the hour. I, I don't, so the newspaper doesn't understand when they read that it's a public hearing. So I agree with you.
And I, and I think that's, I can understand that because it's a public hearing. That's, do you hear the public? But our public hearing, you know, our, our language should state no public, just clearly, I think, no public participation. Only, only the, you know, that was that, I can't have the date, but that actually occurred. You know, we did let everyone speak who zeroed in on that. They didn't know the public hearing was going to be extended at that meeting. So everyone who wanted to speak should, you know, should have showed up at that first meeting. But I just, I just don't want people to be upset or angry that they it says public hearing on the agenda. So same thing, I'm repeating myself, but yeah, I, I can see how the hour would have gotten that that, that confused as well, just based on our own language.
We, we can add a little clause after that from in future, just to clarify.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, me too.
Anything else, Steve?
I have one question, though, also on weed thirty, will that be recommended action on August fourth? Do we think?
I believe so. Yeah, but it's, the only thing is unless something comes out of the last piece of traffic analysis that would push it further along, but I would think so otherwise.
Okay.
So we'll be voting on it.
You, you, you could. That's your, your call. If you, you don't have to, it's up, up to you.
Well, it's up to Lou. Lou, are you thinking we're going to vote on that on August fourth?
I don't know. I have to see what we hear. We always, we always leave the option open for, for voting or for pushing it to our next meeting for a vote. Well, this is the comments of commissioners portion of the meeting. Tammy, you had an issue you wanted to bring up about scheduling?
Yeah, thank you, Lou, for the group. When I was approached to come, you know, join the planning, planning and zoning commission. Originally, the meetings, I was led to believe we're always on the Wednesday, the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday of the month. And then when we got into these meetings, it turns out, one, there's a Thursday meeting and a Wednesday meeting. So I asked Steve in a separate email if we could discuss this. And he replied that he thought after the beginning of the year, it would revert back to both Wednesdays. So it's not all about me, but if anybody else has a feeling about that. I guess, you know, Lou, can I ask everybody's opinion? Is that allowed?
I think, Steve, it might make sense to just send out a a quick survey asking the commission members which, which works best for them. Obviously, not all days are available. There are lots of other meetings. And if it's just between Wednesday and Thursday, that's, that's fine. But why don't we get a sense of what, what works best for the largest number of people?
That's fine. Yeah, I, I mean, staff preference would put them both on Wednesday because the Economic and Community Development Subcommittee of Council meets on the first Thursday as well. And Brian and I or somebody else on our staff asked it. Usually we're at one of those meetings pretty frequently, so it's better for us. And plus I think it helps with the scheduling for if there's something we have to refer out, so.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yeah, Mike.
Earlier, I mentioned that all waterfront properties require access, public access. So I did look that up while I was, you know, while since then, I've just been flipping through. So I put up false information there. All of the, in nineteen eighty-one, the code was changed and waterfront access was added to neighborhood business, all the central, central business district, design district, if I said that correct. The Sono Washington Street Design District, East Avenue Village District, Silvermine Village District. So on the Silvermine River, we pertain to that. And the Rowayton Village District. Golden Hill has no waterfront, so their village district did not have that language in it. Interestingly, the one cemetery street, and I'm not going to speak to the application because that's inappropriate. I'm just going to speak to zoning is that that was in neighborhood business and had a requirement for public access as a, as a result of being in that district and that language is in the code. But we changed that from neighborhood business to the East Norwalk Village District. And as far as I know, that language for waterfront access did not make it into the into the East Norwalk Village District. I may be incorrect, but I don't have that language in front of me. But that's where I was thinking, you know, everything that included waterfront basically over the years. And we all know our zoning code is crazy, right? It's, that's why we're, that's why we're you know, refining it and redoing it. But this language for public access does exist in all of these waterfront areas for the most part in Norwalk. Except I think we may have just had an oversight, maybe left it out of here. And perhaps this application does not require public access. Could you check on that? Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I
They, they the neighborhood business did have for sure. It says any, any property, it has to follow height and, you know, the, the normal language. And, and in addition, anything on the waterfront must have public access to the waterfront. Right? So it's one, one cemetery street does have waterfront access. That's why I thought, that, that's why I was brought it up in the, in the, in the meeting earlier tonight. So I think we need to get clarity on that. That's all.
Yeah, I, I know it's not in the, the new regulations, basically because you know, I think it's a little bit debatable whether this, I know it's Mill Pond, but it's not. I don't think necessarily the intent of the, the overall district and waterfront areas. So that's probably why it just wasn't included. Just ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of the district doesn't touch the water at all. And it's just that, that one parcel that, what's the pond piece?
Okay, any other, any other comments?
Oh, Mike, you were going to say something?
It's just as well that I was muted. That's okay.
I have two, I have two quick questions.
Sure.
Steve, how, how is the rewrite going?
It's a good question. I've got a, said they, so we gave them all our comments, so they're working on that. So as soon as those are wrapped in, it's going to go out to you guys in the public for review. So I hopefully, I'm out next week, so I'm going to try to get a more firm date before I head out from the consultant.
Awesome. And the, the second question was, I don't know if the city is doing anything with this yet, but I saw recently that the state is rolling out some incentive programs, sorry for the screaming in the background, for first time homeowners to help with the down payment. I didn't know if the city is looking to help promote that in any way. We talk about sort of ownership all the time and I don't know if that's crushed the best at all.
I hadn't seen that. If you want to forward it on, I can check, check internally and see if anybody else is working on that.
We'll do.
Could you forward that to me also, Nick?
Happily.
I'd be curious.
Okay, anything else? If not, go ahead, Tammy.
Just Steve, with the industrial zone. We don't have a meeting tomorrow on the twenty-first, right? We're just going to have that August third meeting for the industrial zone?
Yeah, for the waterfront, just, just the waterfront.
Yes, waterfront. Okay. And then when are we going to wrap up the other industrial zone? And I don't think that's what Nick was just referring to.
Yeah, that, so that, that's still being kicked around a little bit with Economic Community Development Committee of Council. So that formal referral was sent a couple of months ago, but with the location of the new school in South Norwalk, there's been a lot of back and forth about the properties on Meadow Street. So we've been meeting with them and come, you know, discussing it and trying to come up with some solutions. So I think that conversation is slated to continue at their, what month are we in? At their August meeting. So assuming they take action, then we'll schedule a public hearing on that, probably for your first September meeting.
Anything else? If not, our next meeting is scheduled for August fourth. That's a Thursday. Hope to see you all there. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All right, Tammy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Be well, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.